We'll call the order of the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 16th, 2024. Please stand and join us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Plaidner, please call up Sro.
Commissioner Nabla?
Here.
Commissioner Noe?
Here.
Commissioner Heikala?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Yep.
Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any further corrections or additions or hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, and the agenda's adopted. Next, we have approved the minutes of our April 18th meeting.
Chair Schwartz?
Commissioner Nabla.
I move that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting, the March 21st.
April 18th.
Our 18th.
Second.
Motion by Nabla, second by Noe. Any corrections, additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Minutes are approved with two extensions, Commissioners Heikala and Schmalki. First order of business this evening is Planning Case 24-8, a site plan for a building addition at 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, Brickwall Services. Mr. Patzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, member of the Planning Commission. So I have before you tonight a site plan request by Brickwall Services for a building addition at IDC Automatic at 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard. So the location is three parcels here on Coon Rapids Boulevard just south of Highway 610. And the, all three parcels are owned by the same owner, but they're three separate parcels right now. IDC Automatic occupies the southeastern most parcel, and they are working with the county right now to combine the three parcels into one parcel, and that will be a condition of approval recommended as part of this item, that the three parcels be combined. But currently, there's still three separate parcels. And IDC Automatic is proposing to expand from its current parcel on to the parcel to the northwest. All three parcels are in the Port Evergreen zoning district. The northwesternmost parcel is also within a PUD. It's the same PUD as the In-Town Suites motel to the northwest. This PUD doesn't carry with it any standards specific to it. It doesn't actually affect any of the requirements that would be put on any development in the PUD. So effectively, the development requirements and standards would fall to the underlying zoning, so that's the Port Evergreen zoning. If there were to be a conflict with the PUD on that northwesternmost parcel, it would come into play as part of the lot combination with the county. So staffer of the opinion that if the county does not see an issue with combining parcels where one has a PUD on it and the other ones don't, there's no issue from staff's perspective as far as the city is concerned. The land use is guided commercial mixed use, so residential and commercial and industrial uses are all land uses that are okay in this, in this land use area according to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So I have here just a picture from Google Maps of the existing IDC Automatic building as seen from Coon Rapids Boulevard. So right now, there's one access off Coon Rapids Boulevard and one to the south that accesses the industrial site to the south, and that accesses Holly Street. So it's possible right now to access the site from Holly Street to the south. And what the applicant is proposing is to remove that access, but I'll get to that in a second. But this is the existing kind of office, showroom, sales area, and then behind it, they have the warehouse and manufacturing area for their business. And so it's one building. It's designed in such a way where it looks like several buildings kind of stuck together. The existing building is 21,740 square feet. What's being proposed is 25,570 square feet, so essentially, the applicant is proposing to about double the size of the building. And the addition would also be a two-story building. It would be one story, but it would have two stories worth of height, the clear height necessary for the warehouse use would make it appear to be a two-story building from the exterior. And I've temporarily labeled the three parcels, parcel one, two, and three, just for ease of understanding until the parcels are combined. The total of the three parcels is 3.92 acres. Parcel one is the existing IDC Automatic parcel. Parcel two is the wooded parcel to the northwest between IDC Automatic and In-Town Suites to the northwest. And parcel three is a small strip that is between the existing IDC Automatic parcel and the site that they use currently for their warehousing operations, which is a site that they're leasing to the southwest, and that accesses Holly Street. So parcel three would just be the strip in between the site that, or the parcel that IDC Automatic owns and the one that they're currently using. And the proposal would be to vacate the site to the southwest, and the addition to the existing building would then serve the same purpose as the site that they're leasing currently. So here's just a look at the site plan. What they're proposing is to remove the access onto Holly Street to the south, keep the same access onto Coon Rapids Boulevard on the east side, so there would still be only one access directly on the Coon Rapids Boulevard. And then on the north, there would be a new access onto the In-Town Suites property, and there would be a second access onto Coon Rapids Boulevard through In-Town Suites property. So that's already an existing access. So there'd be no new access on the Coon Rapids Boulevard. They're also proposing to add a sidewalk along Coon Rapids Boulevard, and that would connect the existing sidewalks in front of the In-Town Suites building and the office buildings to the south. There would be site circulation around the building on the site, so a truck could conceivably enter through the In-Town Suites property and exit onto Coon Rapids Boulevard to the second access. Loading docks are proposed for the kind of southernmost side of the building, so facing away from Coon Rapids Boulevard, and stormwater storage ponds would, are proposed for the Coon Rapids Boulevard side. So parking, the existing building and the proposed addition and stormwater are sort of the only elements of the site that are right up against Coon Rapids Boulevard, and all of them do meet the required setbacks. This is just a little bit closer of a view where you can kind of see the proposed additions, one to the north, the larger building, and then a smaller addition to the south that would mostly serve as truck loading and some warehouse use. So currently IDC Automatic uses their existing building, this section of the building generally for customer-facing operations such as sales floor, showroom, some manufacturing, and then the warehouse element. The proposed addition would take on a lot of the warehouse use of the site that's currently being done at the site to the southwest along Holly Street, and possibly an addition of some manufacturing, but that's not part of the intent of building the addition. And then the southwest addition would just be truck-loading docks and more warehousing. So this is a rendering of what the building would look like from Coon Rapids Boulevard. So you have the existing IDC Automatic building to the left, and then the proposed addition to the right, and those are set back the same amount off of Coon Rapids Boulevard. So the closest corner of the addition is just about the same setback as the closest corner of the existing section of the building. This rendering does make it look a little bit closer, but I think that's not the case. The building materials, the exterior facade materials for the proposed addition are raked concrete tip-up panels, which are permitted facade material in the Port Evergreen District. And the existing building is mostly brick or natural stone. I think it's mostly like a natural stone facade. This is just a elevation showing the same thing as the rendering. I think it's easier to kind of tell what's going on with the rendering than it is with the elevation, but we have that for reference. They are asking for a few flexibilities, which is something that the Planning Commission and the City Council have the option to grant in the Port District and the River Rapids Overlay. So most of the elements of the building and the site meet the requirements of the River Rapids Overlay District and the Port Evergreen District with a few exceptions. So a dimensional flexibility is being requested for the floor area ratio requirement. The Port Evergreen District requires a minimum floor area ratio of 0.6, and what's being proposed has a 0.32 floor area ratio. Being a warehouse building, it is difficult to have multiple stories, and it's difficult to achieve that 0.6 floor area ratio while also having all of the other site elements required. So staff did work with IDC Automatic to get as close as possible, but they are still requesting flexibility on that item. A design flexibility is being requested for the building materials. The applicant requested to have the requirement that 30% of the total building face facing Coon Rapids Boulevard to be brick or natural stone. The applicant requested that requirement to be waived. The existing section of the building is mostly brick or natural stone, which does work partially to meet that 30% requirement, but the proposed building, working with the applicant, staff sort of found that adding a brick or stone wainscoting to the building aesthetically might not be a huge improvement, and so staff are supporting the request for design flexibility to not quite meet that 30% brick and natural stone requirement. And then lastly, let's see, I have it somewhere on here, but I'll just talk about it on the next page. Lastly, they're requesting a dimensional flexibility to go above the maximum of 20,000 square feet of total floor area. This is a requirement in the River Rapids Overlay District, and this requirement basically limits any building of the same use, so where there's only one use in the building, in size at a hard limit of 20,000 square feet. This is in conflict with the Port Evergreen requirement of a 0.6 floor area ratio, so in order to build anything on the site, it would essentially be up to the applicant to either meet the 20,000-square-foot requirement or the floor area ratio. The applicant is proposing a site plan that meets neither of them, but splitting the difference a little bit, and requesting dimensional flexibility on the total floor area as well. So those are the three flexibility requests. Staff did receive one comment ahead of time on the proposal that the applicant was able to provide some insight and response to, and I just wanted to paraphrase that so the Planning Commission are aware of the comment. An owner of a business nearby noted that there was a lot of parking along Holly Street and that trucks had difficulty accessing different sites along Holly Street because of the parking, and wanted to know if the proposal would add more vehicles parked along Holly Street. And the applicant was able to provide the information that they're actually closing off the access to Holly Street from IDC Automatic. So they're likely, if there were any cars that were accessing the IDC Automatic building parking along Holly Street, that would no longer be the case. So if anything, this addition would probably reduce the amount of parking on Holly Street and guide all of that onto the parking spaces on site along Coon Rapids Boulevard. Staff are recommending approval of the proposed site plan with a few conditions, notably some of the items that were not entirely met by the proposal, including dumpsters and trash stores areas being enclosed by a screening structure. So this would be a condition of approval. They would need to show that on the final building plans, as well as an addition of several landscaping items, evergreen trees and ornamental trees, a lighting plan update, this was actually provided to staff already, and the combination of all three lots through the county, as well as the standard items such as a site security agreement. So that is the staff recommendation for the site plan. Staff also recommend approval of the three requested flexibilities, the two-dimensional flexibility requests, and the design flexibility requests. So that is all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patzner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmalki.
So just one question. Can we go back to the parking for just one second?
Of course.
So where you mentioned that there's a current issue with employees parking on Holly, so this would force, so to speak, the employees to park elsewhere. I guess I'm kind of curious, is there sufficient parking to begin with? What is the reason they're parking at Holly to begin with? Are we creating any sort of additional issue here?
Of course. Thank you, Commissioner Schmalki. So staff aren't entirely sure that the parking is caused by IDC Automatic. However, they do have their warehouse along Holly Street, so it's possible that employees would be parking along Holly Street to access that warehouse. They would no longer be able to do so because the access to Holly Street from this site would no longer be there. So it would be very difficult to do and then walk across a different company's site to access IDC Automatic. There is sufficient parking on the site, so they're adding quite a bit of parking to the site compared to what's there right now. And there is sufficient parking for the use, and I believe IDC Automatic employs, I can't remember the exact number, the applicant is here, might be able to answer that, but I think the maximum number of employees is, I think there's 50 employees total, and I don't think there's any time when all 50 employees would be on site. So there is sufficient parking on site, and there shouldn't be any need to park along Holly Street.
Okay. Is that 50 currently, or is that, are they planning to grow to 50? Or, again, just want to make sure we're taking that into consideration if there's growth anticipated.
Of course. They are not proposing to add any employees as a consequence of this addition. They may propose to add employees in the future, but this addition would just be moving the existing employees from the building to the south to the new addition.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
To the building that they lease, or from the building they lease to the new facility.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Any other questions?
Chair Schultz.
Commissioner Noe.
Number 10 here in your recommendations, I'm just curious what the site security agreement would entail. I'm not sure I'm familiar with that.
So the site security agreement is a standard agreement that the city enters into with a developer, that we, essentially, we hold $1,000 in escrow that we return to the applicant when all of the landscaping and exterior site elements such as bike racks, trash enclosures are in place. So during the summer, after a development is complete, staff goes out and inspects a site to make sure that all the landscaping is in place and alive and doing well, and if so, that escrow gets returned. So the agreement just allows staff to kind of hold that money and to enter onto the site to do an inspection in order to ensure that they're compliant.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks.
Of course.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Patzner. So given that Holly will not be available anymore for truck flow, and they're moving the warehousing to here, it would seem that that second access to the In-Town Suites becomes critical for truck traffic flow here. Is there a requirement for access agreement between these two parcels now as well? Because if trucks are entering off of Coon Rapids Boulevard on one side, because it's going to be a right-handout only for presumably both, because that's being a divided road, was that, is that a needed condition here, or was that contemplated at all?
Thank you, Commissioner Geisler. I believe there is already an agreement in place, but I think that you're right. I think that that should probably be added as a condition, since it would need to be verified by staff that there's an agreement in place before site plans can be approved. So I think that that probably should be added as a condition.
And as far as this site plan has been presented, I mean, it would appear that they want to do construction on the other parcel. So do they, I mean, you know, is there a level of agreement between that as well, already documented?
Correct. And the applicant can probably speak to where that agreement is right now, but I agree that that should be added in as a condition, and I would recommend adding that in as a condition based on that comment.
Thank you.
And Mr. Patzner, could you speak a little bit to the flexibility for the floor area ratio and discuss possibly some of the other businesses that we have given this flexibility to?
Of course. So a floor area ratio, in order to meet something like a 0.6 floor area ratio, the floor area would need to be at least 60% of the total site area. In order to do that, a building would have to be at least two stories in most cases because of the other site requirements, including drainage, drainage, you know, stormwater storage ponds, parking, you would usually take up more than 40% of the site. So in order to have a floor area ratio that meets that requirement, a single-story building is a difficult, a difficult type of building to meet that requirement. So it's standard with an industrial-style use or a commercial use that is like a big-box department store as opposed to like a two-story multi-tenant building to not be able to meet those floor area ratio requirements. It is, a 0.6 floor area ratio is a relatively strict requirement, and it's easiest to meet when you have a denser building or a denser development where you have multiple floors with multiple different tenants on those floors. I don't know offhand other sites within the city that have requested the floor area ratio dimensional flexibility, but any, any use within the port districts, within Port, Riverwalk, Evergreen, et cetera, that is a single-story building with a large site around it, likely had to have that dimensional flexibility approved. So for example, the school in Port Riverwalk behind Lily Putt, that's the type of building that it would be very difficult to meet that floor area ratio requirement, but I don't have any offhand that I can point to that I know received that flexibility.
Okay, just to point out, in your, in the staff report, you'd mentioned that QuickTrip have received that because they're at .01. Coon Rapids Strip Mall has received it, they're at .02. And let's see.
And Fresenius.
Fresenius, which is nearby, has a .14, so it's not at all unusual for that flexibility to be granted.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. You remember what I put in the staff report better than I do. I appreciate that.
Well, I'm just reading it off your sheet, so, thank you. Any other questions?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nabla.
The question I have is in regards to commercial truck traffic into the facility since this, the new building will be, become the new location for manufacturing or warehousing, whatever, that what is the volume of, or the impact of the amount of truck traffic coming in and out of the site since Holly access will be restricted and the right, the right way in and right way out on Coon Rapids Boulevard and by the In-Town Suites? The question is, what kind of volume shall be expected of the facility? Like one truck, four trucks a day?
Thank you, Commissioner Nabla. The applicant is here and might be able to respond to that question better than I can. I do know that some of the truck traffic that's directed onto Holly Street currently will likely be directed onto Coon Rapids Boulevard through one of those two accesses, but I will let the applicant speak to that since they're going to be more knowledgeable than I am.
Any other questions for Mr. Patzner at this time? All right, is there anything commissioners would like to add? If so, please come up to the microphone, give your name, please, for the record.
Randy Martin here, owner of IDC Automatic. Just a couple, respond to a couple of questions that come up regarding parking and then also truck traffic. So regarding parking on Holly Street, currently, none of our employees park on Holly Street. I'm actually not sure who's parking on Holly Street, but it's a mute point, as we've discussed. But the, our current proposed building will have 57 parking spaces, and currently, the, we have, as far as administrative staff, the max amount of people we have today is around 20 individuals that would park at the facility, and the remaining employees go out and do their work, they drive their vehicles home and come into the work in the morning. So we have an excess of parking for future and also for current state, so I wanted to answer that. And then also the question regarding trucks and semi-trucks, most vehicles are coming in off of Coon Rapids Boulevard currently. If you look at, so we have, we call it Building 3, 9355 Holly Street, releasing that facility. If you look at the way that dock is set up, it's easiest to come in on Coon Rapids Boulevard and back into that dock. Not saying we don't have anyone that comes on Holly Street, but I'd say 90% of our 53-foot trucks will be coming off of Coon Rapids Boulevard. From an average standpoint, I asked about quantity of vehicles, semi-trucks. I don't actually know the answer to that, but I would guess one a day maybe, one every other day. We're a service organization that does bring in material for servicing, but we're not like a heavy manufacturing company that's bringing in materials, manufacturing, and shipping out to customers, things of that nature.
Thank you. All right, we need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 24-8, a site plan for a building addition at 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, Brickwall Services. Anyone here to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
The petitioner was, can you address, I'm sorry, address that access agreement with In-Town Suites? Is there one available to get onto your property with that?
Yeah, so there currently is an access easement, whatever you call, there's a dedicated easement that comes with that property. When we bought the building, bought the adjacent land, and there is actually a defined entrance into our, into that proposed site that we plan on building a building. So there's an actual curb line going into our site, and there's a dedicated easement to get to that site at that location. So there would be no legal, additional legal requirements needed in order to access our site from that side of the Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Okay.
So there already is an easement, we don't need to add that as a condition then?
Correct.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Ruchkony.
I would suggest that's a good idea to just include it, because if the nature of the use of the easement can change or in reparseling the property and that sort of thing, just need to make sure that continues as this moves forward.
Okay, we'll add it back in. Thank you. And Commissioner, any other thoughts, concerns, recommendations, motions?
Chair Schultz.
Commissioner Noe.
Seems like a growing business in our Coon Rapids community. I think it's a great use of the land that's there, those few flexibilities. So I'd recommend in Planning Case 24-8 that we recommend approval for the proposed site plan with those following 11 conditions.
I'll second it.
12, 12 conditions, right?
Yes, we're adding one.
The easement, right?
Do we need to phrase the 12?
And you're also recommending, or should we take the flexibility separate? Mr. Ruchkony.
That's a preference. As long as the motion is clear, I think you can handle it either way.
Okay.
Mr. Noe, you want to?
Restate the motion then.
All right.
Yeah, in Planning Case 24-8, I would recommend approval with 12 conditions, including addressing the easement on the property that that continues on with the repurposing of the land into one parcel.
And the design flexibility issues?
And dimensional.
Any other too? Along with the flexibilities, yes, the dimensional and design flexibilities, yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Ruchkony?
Your meaning, Mr. Chair.
But legally.
We're good.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Noe, seconded by Nabla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. And that motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and a decision will be made by the City Council at the June 4th meeting. Good luck. All right, our next case, Planning Case 24-9, Coon Rapids Townhomes, 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC. Mr. Patzner.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz, members of the Planning Commission. So what I have before you tonight is a rezoning request for a parcel on University Avenue and Butternut Street by September Sun Architecture. This request is the first step in a proposal to develop townhomes on this property. So the current request is just the rezoning, not the townhome development itself, but the rezoning is with the intention of developing townhomes. The site is currently zoned office, which is a commercial zoning, but it is guided commercial mixed use, so commercial and residential zonings are both allowed on this parcel by the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So what's being proposed is to rezone this parcel from office to moderate density residential. The surrounding properties are low-density residential to the north and west, office to the south, and then there's commercial zoning in the, in the city of Blaine across University Avenue to the east. So commercial, residential, and office uses all surround this parcel, and the land use designation is commercial mixed use, which is consistent with the parcel to the south. So currently, this parcel is used as a community garden for the Peace Lutheran Church to the north. However, Peace Lutheran Church is selling the par- However, Peace Lutheran Church is selling the parcel off with the request that whatever is developed there leaves some small area to continue the community garden use, but they no longer need the whole parcel for that. So September Sun are proposing to rezone that and develop townhomes on it. The maximum, so, one complicating factor is that the medium-density residential zoning district updates are still in process. The City Council has introduced the item to update the medium-density and high-density residential zoning districts, that ordinance. However, that won't be, there won't be a decision until the following council meeting. So, the applicant is asked to attempt to meet the updated MDR zoning requirements, based on the assumption that that zoning district will be, the update to that zoning district will be approved. However, it will be a condition of approval that that MDR ordinance approval actually does go through. So the timing does kind of complicate this, but the application is going to be based on the updated MDR zoning standards. So that has a maximum of nine units an acre, and has some changes to the open space, the private and common open space requirements compared to the old MDR district standards. The eventual townhome application, which staff did receive and is currently scheduled for the June Planning Commission meeting, will have thirty-four units. The very north end of the site is proposed to remain an easement for the church to keep its community garden on the site, whereas the south majority of the site is proposed for the townhome development. The majority of the zoning requirements in the updated MDR zoning code are met by the proposal for townhomes. So if the rezoning is approved, the eventual proposed townhome development is expected to meet the MDR requirements, with the exception of a few small changes that staff are requesting. I won't go into those entirely yet, but it may be helpful to have some understanding of what's eventually being proposed, even though that's not what's being discussed tonight, just to know what the intention of the rezoning is. So this is a, an initial site plan proposal for the townhome units on the site. So they would be oriented east-west, there'd be thirty-four of them in six-unit blocks, and they'd be accessed from a shared driveway on the west side of the site. And all of them would also access Butternut Street rather than University Avenue, due to the county request that no new accesses on University Avenue be created. So that's a requirement from the county that they need to be able to access the site off of a side street, and Butternut Street was chosen for that. There were a couple of public comments that staff received ahead of time on this proposal, and all of them related to traffic on Butternut and Cottonwood Streets. And I just wanted to paraphrase those, so the Planning Commission knows what is being, or what comments were received by staff. Mainly, the comment received was that kids use that street currently to walk to Eisenhower Elementary, and there's concerns over additional traffic along Butternut Streets and Cottonwood Streets and other residential streets in the area that might cause reduced safety for kids that are walking to school along those streets. So, questioning whether there would be an increase in traffic incidents by adding thirty-four townhome units. So, just to go over what the change in zoning would mean for the parcel, the permitted uses in the office district in the current zoning district include commercial uses, a relatively low-intensity commercial district, but still some relatively high-intensity commercial uses would be allowed. So, for example, retail grocery stores, shopping like that, restaurants or coffee shops, veterinarian medical or dental offices, personal service establishments like nail salons and dry cleaners, these are all permitted uses in the office district. The rezoning would change the permitted uses in the district to only allow homes, essentially, so, two-family homes, townhomes, and multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses. So, that would be the change in the district. And staff do believe, in response to the traffic issue, that the MDR zoning district is less likely to have eventual use on it that creates traffic issues compared to the office district, which would have some higher intensity commercial uses, such as coffee shops, allowed on the district. So staff are of the opinion that thirty-four townhomes would be less likely to cause traffic issues than some of the possible uses in the office district. So with that, city staff do recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, based on the land use, the corresponding land use, commercial mixed use that is on the property. And staff believe that the proposed rezoning would not have any adverse impacts on the surrounding area, that it is compatible with the adjacent land uses. So there are lower-density residential uses to the west and commercial uses to the south and east. And staff do see medium-density residential as kind of a bridge between those lower-intensity and higher-intensity uses, and believe that the area along University Avenue is an appropriate area for this sort of middle-density residential. And staff find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the future land use guidance of commercial mixed use. So that's all I have for you in terms of a presentation, this is also a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patzner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Patzner, so regardless of what the council does on MDR, if we rezone this MDR, whatever they build, regardless of what we see here, but we'll have to comply with whatever the zoning is active at the time that it goes in. So whether it's under the old designation of density or the new for the units per acre, that will happen no matter what, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
With our usual applicants, and when we look at them like these that are standalone, the one thing, if Planner Patzner can elaborate on, is the situation of this gardening easement on the northern side, whereas the first thought that comes into my mind is usually on the applicants that come before us, one of the requirements is that there's some green space, or if there's going to be children, that there's a play area or a dog exercise area. I don't see, I don't see the opportunity for any of that with this garden on the north side.
Thank you, Commissioner Nablock. So this, we will discuss this a little bit more with the eventual site plan proposal, but the garden is not being counted towards the required private and public, or private and common open space on the site. Staff have worked with the applicant to maximize, to the extent possible, the green space on the site, without counting the garden into that, because the garden is still being planned to use for, be used by the Peace Lutheran Church and its congregation, and would not be essentially for use by the residents of these townhomes. The applicant is proposing a play area on the northwest side, just south of that dedicated garden easement, so kind of a larger green area on the northwest side. And then, other green spaces between the townhome, townhomes themselves, as well as including the areas kind of along the University Avenue setbacks and the setbacks to the west. Staff found that that was, it did meet the open space and green space requirements for the site.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
Mr. Patzner, could you talk again about the access to the site for a townhome development? It's not coming off University. Tell me about it again, I want to clarify it.
Absolutely. So there will only be one access to the site, and this will be off of Butternut Street?
Mr. Chair, point of order. We're not considering a site plan here. We don't, we don't know. We're looking at zoning today. We have no idea what this site will look like. We're just considering zoning tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Geisler. So, it might, I agree with Commissioner Geisler, it might be best not to consider the details of the site plan at this time. That will be something that we can consider when the site plan is, there'll be another public hearing when the site plan is being proposed, planned for June twentieth. So it might be best mostly to discuss the zoning change. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Patzner, in your diagrams here, it shows it's listed as a peace cemetery. Does that mean that there's graves on this property, or?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. This is something that is, this label is only on the zoning map, and I haven't seen it anywhere else, and I didn't catch it in time to remove it before adding it to the staff report. I'm not aware of any cemetery on the site, but the applicant might be able to speak to that. This label might be erroneous, but I honestly don't know.
Well, I think it's something that we need to clarify before we make a determination, because I'm not sure we're, we'd be interested in disturbing graves, if there are in fact.
Understood. The applicant should be able to speak to that, and they are here tonight, but I can't honestly answer the question tonight. Thank you.
All right, we'll wait for the petitioner. Any other questions? All right, petitioners, please come up and give your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Kuntz. I am with September Sun Architecture. I am the applicant and the architect for the potential project here. Yeah, we are only seeking zoning tonight. I think, yeah, the cemetery, I think we pulled this off of Google, and it was on there, and I'm not even sure, you know, what's going on with that, but I don't think there are any graves on the site. And if that needs to be a condition of approval, we'll certainly do that. But I'm here to answer any questions, and go from there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
With respect to if this was rezoned as MDR, are you comfortable with either designation for density for MDR, whether the City Council approves left or right on the new version of MDR or the current one?
I am representing, you know, the people that own this parcel, and I believe they will construct, try to construct something regardless. Obviously, you know, more density is better for them, and is more advantageous, and so we'll have to see. I mean, right now, the plan is, and we submitted our site plan review on Monday, or our site plan on Monday, and, you know, thirty-four units is what we have down right now, based on, you know, guidance from the planners, so.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Casey.
So, it looks like there's water access on it, because it was a garden? Am I, I'm seeing hoses on the property.
Yeah, I think right now, they use a lot of that site as a garden.
As a garden, yeah.
And so there's, who knows? There's a lot of.
So maybe, not a cemetery, but there is, there is water access there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smokey.
My question is back to actually staff, again, really quick. So, I did see the slide regarding the public comments, and reading those, also understanding that this is for site plan, or not for site plan, but for rezoning. Have we addressed those comments, and do we consider those more specific to site planning as well?
Thank you, Commissioner Smokey. I think it's actually important to consider those comments right now, because rezoning is the first step in the eventual site plan development. So, I don't think it's outside of the scope to consider what a, you know, even if there wasn't a site plan proposal, rezoning to moderate-density residential brings with it the assumption that it would develop that way eventually. And so, considering the traffic impacts of moderate-density residential compared to the existing office district, I think is relevant. And staff have spoken with several residents who have called staff directly, and provided some level of response, but I did just want to kind of paraphrase that conversation a little bit here at the meeting. And staff's general response to the traffic concern is that it is, it's, staff's opinion that it's more likely for a moderate-density residential development to have a smaller traffic impact than an eventual office use development on the property. I think the property is likely to be developed eventually either way, and there's more potential in the office district for a higher intensity, higher traffic use. And they, a potential developer would still not be able to create a new access onto University Avenue, even if it was a commercial use, so that that traffic would still be directed onto Butternut Street, whether it's office or moderate-density residential.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Patzner, if I may follow on with that, the, so the logic behind, you know, how you arrive at that, residential typically sees out-to-work, back-home type trips, two trips per day, maybe three. Office would, could potentially see traffic from six AM to ten PM, and that's kind of the logic between why office would be a higher traffic intensity than residential, is that, is that how staff is approaching this still?
Correct. The high-end cap for traffic in office, staff believe, is likely to be higher than the high-end cap for moderate-density residential, which would be capped at nine, nine units an acre, whereas office could have a lot more traffic coming in and out.
A caribou in the morning gets pretty busy.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Mr. Patzner, I actually drove coming from the south today, and to access that property, if you live there, you'd come up off Egrit, I think it's up Dogwood, to get to that. And I would, you know, just kind of talking through it, I mean, if it's a caribou and you're going there, you're probably coming off University Avenue, and they'd figure that out. But if you're living there, I would imagine you're going to get a lot more traffic through that Dogwood viaduct up Egrit. So, it might not be the same traffic patterns, I guess is what I'm getting to?
Thank you, Commissioner Knoblock. That's a, that's a good point, and someone who lives at that site might know the residential roads better, and feel more comfortable accessing the site from a residential road versus needing to come off University, like someone who's only visiting as a business. I think that's a good point.
Any other questions for Mr. Patzner at this time? All right, we do need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case twenty-four dash nine, rezoning for Coon Rapids Townhomes, one-zero-seven-zero-one Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC. Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Alan Frohader, that's A-L-A-N, last name F-R-O-H-M-A-D-E-R. I live at one-zero-eight-one-zero Cottonwood Street Northwest, Coon Rapids, approximately two blocks west of the proposed rezoning property. I want to thank Mr. Patzner and Brian Armstrong, our Ward Five City Council member, for their responses to our concerns and requests for information. I wanted to mention, I've been a resident of that neighborhood since nineteen ninety-five with my family. My two children were walkers for both Northdale and Eisenhower. The kinder care, daycare, located immediately south of the property, also has parents that walk their children there in wagons or strollers, so that's another consideration. Each unit, thirty-four units or so, is likely to have two vehicles, those vehicles and their guests during the holidays will be using whatever parking is available on that lot, but at some point, street parking plus the additional street traffic will have to be looked at as safety and congestion issues. The neighborhood is known for speeders. We have three cul-de-sacs in the immediate area, a lot of speeders trying to get through north to south along Dogwood, perhaps heading towards Northdale, or moving from Foley, heading east towards University, encounter those cul-de-sacs, sometimes get frustrated, and when you see them go by once, you know, you're going to see them go by on the way out, trying to find their way through. We have existing noise and congestion from University to the west, Northdale to the north, Foley, or Foley to the west, University to the east, and Egrit Boulevard to the south. So we already have an existing flow of traffic surrounding the area, as well as Highway six-ten, or Highway ten, about a mile to the south, which we can also hear. There's going to be an increase in the number of vehicles, unlike the existing commercial development, which I feel is compatible with the existing residential area. We're going to have more of a twenty-four-hour-a-day type thing, as people who work three different shifts, go shopping at the Cub Foods, at Old Park Plaza, across the street in Blaine. Additional traffic for those sorts of normal activities should be looked at, too. So, those were my concerns. I was here almost nineteen years ago to the month when the last proposal came up. And the last thing I wanted to say is, the church has not had a large-scale garden going there until last year, there was maybe a small-scale garden, but two years ago was the last full large-scale garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Tammy Tucker. I live at 18208th Avenue, which Commissioner No referenced, as you come in off of Egrit onto Dogwood, and it curves around to 108th Avenue, and I can't tell you the number of times the cars race around that corner, and I don't care who they are or where they're going. They race around that corner, they've, we've had our mailbox mowed down just at the end of last summer. We, I was sitting in the house, it was nine o'clock at night, and all of a sudden, I hear this screeching sound and a bam, and I go outside, and the mailbox had been hit again, and there was a gentleman, a young man, walking down the street, and he was just standing there shocked. I mean, that car almost hit him, and they don't stop, they just keep going. It's a terrible, terrible access. If you have a business, then people are going to access it off of University most likely, depending on the direction they're going. I'm not a big fan of Butternut either for the access, but if you're a residential there, then people are going to find their way, and they're going to come racing down 108th Avenue, and there are young families with young kids, and yes, we should keep them out of the street. I've lived there for forty-three years. I had to keep my kids out of the street, but it isn't always easy, and the traffic just gets worse and worse. So, I am very concerned about the increase in traffic, particularly for residential at that location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lori Ann Frohmaner, and I live at 10810 Cottonwood Street Northwest. I'm here because I believe that this would be a very, very serious safety issue for everyone in the neighborhood. There are no sidewalks on any of our streets, and any of the kids that are attending Eisenhower Elementary School, they're walking on the street, they're going around cars that may be parked on the street, and they're walking or they're biking to get to school. We also have, there's a daycare that's right across from this site that you're talking about, and I occasionally see people walk to that site to bring their kids there. I have, as, in the last few weeks, I've been watching a woman that actually pulls a wagon with a couple of kids in it. So, they're trying to stay to the side of the road, but there are cars parked on the street, and you're weaving in and out, and it's, you're sometimes watching people go closer to the middle of the street. In addition to the walkers that we have, we have, I believe, two or three bus stops in that area. One of them's right off our side yard, the kids that are, I believe they go to Coon Rapids, but I'm not sure, and I'm not sure what the other two buses are for, but the kids that are waiting for these school buses are waiting on the side of the street. So, again, you've got a traffic that you'd be putting where school kids are standing, waiting to go to school. In the evenings, it's not uncommon to see families, there's a lot of young kids in our area, they'll be pulling a bike, they might be on a little bike that, you know, two, two, three-year-old kids don't go very fast, and you hear the parents telling them to stay to the side, but they don't always do that. But the people in our neighborhood, we know to watch for it, and we've been really fortunate, no one's ever gotten hurt, but there is a lot of traffic and no sidewalks, so everybody's using the street to get around. And we have a couple of parks nearby us that families are walking to get there also. So, in my opinion, to rezone this and add a unit with thirty-four units to it is going to give you at least thirty to sixty more cars that are driving on a street that kids are using to walk to school and families are using to go around in the evenings. People will walk up to, we have a Cub Foods by us, we have a couple of fast food places, and you can see them walking up to get pizza, I mean, things like that. So, I just think it would really be a serious safety issue to add all this traffic to an already busy residential area, and I think somebody would get hurt.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, my name is Todd Medina. I live at 112108th Avenue. Three houses to the north of the proposed driveway, or the access that has to be on Butternut, is an uncontrolled intersection that goes to a cul-de-sac. I live right at the corner, and I see cars every day going right through 108th, across Butternut, into that cul-de-sac. Along with that, along with all the other businesses and people walking, I walk my dogs every day along those streets. And along Butternut, there also is a group home for mentally challenged people. And along with that, there is also a lot of cars parked on the streets for there. Sometimes they're on both sides of the road. There is maybe a lane and a half with the cars parked on one side of the road, if you have cars parked on both sides of the road. Along that, along Butternut, you would only have one passage and slowing traffic, it would impede traffic. It is not a good situation to increase traffic along the city streets, going through that, through an uncontrolled intersection where kids and families are going through there, and it is not the proposed way that that was made to be used, to have that much traffic additional for that size of property.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Lori Jensen, I live at 10775 Butternut Street. I've lived there for twenty-eight years, and I have the same concerns as every one of my neighbors, and I've seen this go on for years and years. Rezoning this and adding all that traffic is going to cause nothing but danger to our community. The kids are out there all the time, and in the wintertime, there's no parking on our street, and I can just see that overflow, and there'll be parking everywhere. It's minimum, like the gentleman just said, when you've got people parking on both sides of the street after April 1st, I have all I can do to get by in my little car. How are they going to get by with construction vehicles? How are they going to be going in and out with all that additional traffic? It's a danger, and I don't think it should be rezoned.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Deshaie Hudson, I own a duplex right next door to the post-site, 10769, 10763. You hear from our neighbors about the cars dripping through the driveway and all of the traffic off of University, but yet they want to propose to put more cars on this street with only one entrance? Why not have two entrances come from one Butternut and one off of 108th? They come here without a plan. I'm also a construction developer. They come here without a plan, to show you no green space, no, they're not saying would they comply with the MDR zoning. Thirty-four units times two, sixty-eight, plus the seventeen additional that they would have right up against my, my property, that's eighty-five cars. Not to combat the crime issues that we already have from the other rental townhomes off of University, on the other side of 108th. I just think that rezoning this and then saying, oh, we'll see if they meet the criteria after that is a bad, bad ordeal, bad situation. I think they should come to the table with all of the, all of what they propose before we say yes to rezoning. I think that's just fair to the community and to Coon Rapids, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Public hearing.
My name is Jay Homeland. I live at 160109th Lane Northwest, that's on a cul-de-sac just up from Butternut, on, just up from the proposed site. I guess I understand that this is just for rezoning, and it really hasn't so much to do with the, the actual plan that will eventually go in, but I've got some, I've done a little study on this, and I guess the, the first thing that's really obvious to me is that you can't, when you're going northbound on University, you can't turn into this project, unless there were a turn lane and that they were to take out the median, there's no way to get to that project from southbound or northbound University. I can see people doing U-turns to get in there off of University, it's going to be a big problem. Unless there was a, a, a turn lane and, 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 and an intersection actually created there with a stoplight, I don't see that it makes a whole lot of sense to put thirty-four units in this little spot. Thirty-four units, they claim there's seventeen guest parking spots, and that the two, the two-unit and three-unit apartments will get a garage, a two-car garage. Well, I did a little addition, a little figuring here, and basically, if you get, if you figure that there's twenty-six stalls, that's thirteen double garages, you subtract that from the thirty-four, and you end up at twenty-one of these single-bedroom units, twenty-one of these units are single-bedroom, that, that means that there's thirty-eight open My experience tells me that people who live in single-bedroom apartments are usually a couple, and they've usually got two cars. I'm always, I'm already seeing that this is a fallacy, about seventeen guest spaces are actually already used up. These people are going to be parking on the, on the streets before you know it. It's also, like my neighbors are saying, it's, it's, it's going to cause a lot of traffic in our neighborhood, we've already got plenty of traffic in our neighborhood, and we've already got too many rental houses in our neighborhood. My experience with rental houses is that there's always an abundance of cars in the driveways.
Please finish up, sir, your three-minute hour out.
Oh, well, I didn't know I only had three minutes. If I sit down, can I come back up again? Let me just say, I think it's a bad idea to change the zoning on that piece of property. I think it's a bad idea to put that many units.
We're not talking units here tonight.
Wow.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, my name is Eric Marksberry. I am the owner of Summit Dental, one of the commercial properties just to the south of this proposed development. Our building has been there since 1993, I've been an owner there for twenty-one years since 2003, and I don't consider myself a business, I consider myself a neighbor. See, a lot of my friends here. We have been broken into, we routinely clean up liquor bottles and syringes in our, in our parking lot. We routinely need to call the police to see if they can move a car that is parked in our lot. And this is being bookended by two churches and a daycare already. It is already, I mean, you say it's low-density by definition, but it's feeling pretty high-density already. I think it all depends on what type of city we want to have. September Sun Architecture, they have some projects, I believe, in Chicago and East 54th Street, in some residential areas, but they're apartment buildings, forty-seven units on a half acre, or on a point-four acre lot proposed, and that's down around Lake Nacomis, downtown, I mean, and those areas are, are, you know, sort of made to be a little bit higher-density. You move to suburbs so that you don't have high-density, you move to suburbs so you do have a feeling of community and neighborhood. And so I think it really depends on, do we want to change the zoning to drop in the middle of a neighborhood with a lot of very passionate neighbors, medium-density, but sure looks high-density to me, where it's shoulder-to-shoulder townhouses on the entire plot? So, it really comes down to what, what type of city we want to have. I understand the need to develop this space. It's a lovely space in University, I just have to think there's better uses for the space, more low-density housing, more duplexes, and by the way, you're, you guys have been our neighbors, and we've had wonderful relations with the, with the folks that you rent to, so. But I, I hope there's an alternative here. I hope there's an alternative to develop this, but also keep the spirit of the neighborhood intact. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in the public hearing?
Couple of comments, Andre Belima, property address 70108th Avenue. It's on a cul-de-sac, twin home, I only, only have of the duplex, twin home, and I don't like high-density. I like single-family, low-density, it's quality of life, not as much traffic, you know, it's easier to keep order, and I am proponent of single-family, low-density, if it's possible for this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I live at 10867 Butternut Street, and I just wanted to add my voice to everybody else that lives there, that the traffic is the principal objection to this amendment. If they would put the access off Northdale, off of University, you know, we can't change everything, but as everybody else is saying, the traffic that would be brought to a walking residential street, that's, you guys wouldn't want it in your neighborhood, would you? Of course you don't answer, but it's, I think would be really a problem, because I'm out walking, and in the early years when I moved in there, '82, I could get out and walk my mailbox. And now, between going from Northdale Boulevard, if, if the traffic begins to see backed-up traffic at the intersection of Northdale and University, they automatically rip through Butternut Street to avoid that intersection when they want to go south. So, I, like I said, I just wanted to add my voice, that the traffic is the worst thing. If they move access in Egress up to Northdale, you know, that could be an option for the Do you understand what the...
This is not a question-and-answer time, sir.
Oh, oh, all right. That's all that I've got, then.
Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Nilt, I live at 10772 Butternut. I have two concerns, the traffic for the children, they're all narrow streets in there, all of them, Cottonwood, Dogwood. My main concern, like my neighbor Dee had said, crime. I'm a public health nurse in three communities. They all start good, these buildings, but they don't end up well, unless it's a senior building, usually don't have a lot of crime. And I'm very concerned about our little area of Coon Rapids that is still a good community, not lasting to be good.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Last call. All right, we will close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission.
Chair Schorthe.
Commissioner Noblock.
I appreciate all the input and I know we're focusing on the issue at hand that this is a rezoning issue, but we need to take impact that, of all the material in our packet and all the issues that have been brought up that kind of are more addressed to a site plan, it does have impact to the community. So I won't be approving or making a recommendation towards this rezoning until some further things are addressed because, two things, it's access to the proposed rezoning and the site plan, which will be forthcoming in the future sometime. There needs to be better access to whatever goes into this piece of land. And the second thing is, I think it's a much bigger impact and I see the root cause is that this is a very dangerous area in regards to traffic. And that really needs to be addressed with the elected representatives, the city staff, traffic, police. That needs to be addressed. In my recommendation or my opinion, that needs to be addressed first before anything else goes further in this regard. And that's what I wanted to share with the commission and to everyone else, that that's much more critical than, in my view, of anything else, further discussion of this area. So just for recommendation or consideration that we need to get a control or handle on traffic flow and speed and safety on, in this neighborhood first, so that's all.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smokey.
So I do again thank the community for coming in and sharing with us their feelings and perspective about this proposal. It is really a difficult one because you're clearly passionate about it. I think that there are some things that maybe need to be considered. I like the fact that you're asking for options, not necessarily saying no, but you're asking for options. I think it's important that, you know, it's like if you look at how it is currently zoned as, you know, office district, understand that as they were explaining there, the types of businesses that could move in there today, right? So don't move forward with a moderate density, but then, you know, use the land for office and an example of a, you know, coffee shop was given. Those have their downsides too, being adjacent to neighborhoods, right? There's lighting, there's traffic during the day, there is deliveries that occur, you know, the timing of that. There is, yeah, there's additional noise. You cited the noise that you already feel like you pick up all the way from Highway 10, right? So I can appreciate that probably if this was a proposal for building a, some sort of a business site, a new commercial space, there might be some feelings brought up by the same members of the community regarding maybe some of those, you know, nuances as well. I'm not sure, I'm going to say, I don't know that I agree that the timings may be perfect for this proposal, that if moderate density is the only option, I don't know if that's, if there is an option, an alternative option that maybe would, you know, meet the community's request and also meet the development's, you know, needs for building the property. But I feel like I tend to agree with Commissioner Noblock and I'm not sure that I'm ready to approve this tonight or to recommend an approval for tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chair, I actually, to dovetail on Commissioner Smokey's comment there, if we don't rezone this to a residential of some tier, we could be looking at a strip mall, we could be looking at a new bank, we could be looking at a restaurant, which could be having traffic all day, every day, all the time. We can't change the roads with this site. So if we don't make this residential, we are looking at potentially a business being developed here because the developer has said they want to build, develop the land. The church is also trying to divest of the land to presumably for benefits to themselves. To that extent, I think having homes here is better than commercial for the exact reasons that the community is citing. The amount of traffic that you see going in and out across the street from University is what you'd be looking at coming through all of those residential neighborhoods. With respect to access on University, it's a county-stated highway. City doesn't have a whole lot of sway there. The county gets to say whether or not we can do a curb cut there or not. To just be perfectly blunt, the county won't let anything happen there. It does not matter what the city wants to do, we can try and push for it, but that's, given that the cut on Northdale is already there, that's what it will be, it'll be, just to be perfectly frank. Whether, you know, moderate density has a range to it. It doesn't have to be the maximum. Low density is four units per acre. That's a house every quarter acre. It actually can go up to five, which is a 10th acre. That's what low-density residential can be. That's not an insignificant number of homes. It's actually what most of this community is built on, it's roughly around four units per acre. So moderate to low, the swing isn't as big. It's certainly not suitable for a high density. But I do think from the perspective of what makes more sense here, of putting in some sort of commercial development, which will drive traffic all day, every day through residential roads, makes way less sense than homes. And so I'm more inclined to move towards a moderate density approval tonight because I think it will better suit the community than if we ask for them to develop businesses in a place where access is poor. They're not going to take down the divided median on University. And I think having people going to and from home versus people coming from all around going to here. I actually think the other benefits we have in the community here, having a daycare across the street could be hugely beneficial for people to live here. Having a park that's only 1,500 feet away is a great reason to build more residential there. Having the church, the preschool, the schools, the amenities around the community that you all love are great reasons to make more residential here instead of more business. And so this is why I'm actually more for this than against it. I do, I do agree that there are concerns around traffic. Unfortunately, the roads have been designed the way they are. University has been developed the way it is. When we put in the divided median, that stops moving the left-hand turns, that starts making a lot of alternative actions there. Again, it's a county road, same thing with Northdale, county road. They've made their choices, they've made their designs. So I look at this community as a space where more residential is more beneficial than commercial. And that's what office would bring, is more commercial to this area with more traffic and more activity.
Chair Schorthe.
Commissioner Noblock.
I can agree with Commissioner Geisler's perspective. I'm very, well, I label myself, I'm kind of always been very pro-business, pro-developers and such, but in this circumstance, it's like choose your, if there's an issue of the community and traffic, that kind of trumps everything else. So do you want to have moderate, more dangerous traffic or you want to have super-extreme dangerous with more commercial business? The issue still resides that there's traffic issues, there's safety issues. So I can't believe I'm saying that, but you know, I, you know, being, all my kids are older and that now too, but I love seeing families out with their dogs, with their kids, in that kind of environment. And if there are issues like that, nothing really else seems as important. And the issues can be taken care of and addressed, but I think we need to focus on what has the biggest impact. And this land will be developed. It may not be, I think moderate density may be the issue. Maybe it's a different design, a different plan. And we're talking about rezoning, but not what's going to go in there, but I think the focus needs to remain on making whatever goes into this area be helpful to the neighborhood and the community. And access and traffic, I'll repeat again, is, it trumps, it's more of a focus in my perspective in this development, in this rezoning, so.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. First, I'd like to thank the public here for coming and speaking your mind. This is your city and we appreciate hearing your thoughts. To respond to a few points that were mentioned or brought up, first, as Commissioner Geisler has already stated, University Avenue is controlled totally by the county. The city has no control. And this county has pointed out a long time ago that they are not going to allow any curb cuts on the University Avenue. So access to this property in any, any manner to University Avenue is, it just isn't there. Someone made a comment, why not have access to 108th Avenue? This property doesn't abut 108th Avenue. There's no way that they can have access to 108th Avenue. There's lots with homes out to 108th Avenue that prohibit this property from being able to access 108th Avenue. Likewise, this property does not abut Northdale. So again, it cannot access Northdale. The only access to this property in any shape or form is from Butternut. So like it or not, Butternut is the only access to this property, no matter what is built on this property. And those were just a few comments that I wanted to clarify. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Commissioner Heikola.
I too appreciate the fact that everybody has packed the house tonight and spoken their opinion, given their opinion. That's what city, that's a good thing for, to have happen here. Speaking to Commissioner Geisler's comments and the chair here, there's not a lot of options. There's one option. And that's what it is, to go in here from Butternut. Or the other option, of course, being, changing it to business, which I don't think most of you would appreciate either. All of us, myself included, live in areas where there's developments going on in my neighborhood, you know, not too far away, that I'm not real excited about, but it's simply a fact that it happens. And so I, you know, I think the rezoning, it might come back with a different plan, but I think the rezoning, I would approve the rezoning. And one thing I might ask also, and I'm not sure if this would appease anybody or not, but is there an opportunity for stop signs at 108th and Butternut?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Buciccone.
Traffic flow is something we normally would probably talk about during site plan, Commissioner Heikola. I think some of the considerations before the commission are outlined in the packet there. And so specifics as to what the city can or can't do with the intersection, that's one of the things engineering will look at as part of the site plan review process. And they'll also take a look at turning radius for fire trucks, things like that.
Point the taken, I understand.
Anyone else have anything to say? Any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I will speak to my own thinking about this and realizing all your concerns, very valid. Traffic will be the problem in one form or another. But my feeling is that development is going to happen. We can try and channel that. I feel like the rezoning is in order. Site plan is down the road, we can't speak to that, but I think the rezoning, I will be voting in favor of it tonight, realizing that there's problems, of course, that have to be addressed, but it won't be tonight.
Chair Schultz.
Commissioner No.
Again, like everybody else said, thank you for coming. Appreciate the feedback. I do think on that piece of property, the zoning change to moderate density is probably the best use of the property, knowing that in moderate density, I believe it's five to nine units, doesn't have to be maximized, where you could have, phone going off, less density. And maybe the city can address some of those concerns about the stop signs and maybe a way to make it safer within all of this. I do think that the zoning change makes sense, notwithstanding my concerns about traffic and some of those other items that got brought up.
Chair Schorthe, Commissioner No, if I may. Because Butternut Street and 108th Avenue are city streets, stop sign conversation is something that we can have with Engineering Department. Unlike University Avenue and Northdale, which are controlled by the county, the city does have some control over those streets. So that is a conversation that we can have between now and future meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Pastner. Could we do like some of those speed bumps or are those some kind of the considerations you could have there or am I out of order here?
Let's pump the brakes there, let's deal with Westwood Forest for now.
Gotcha.
Anyone else have anything or anyone ready to make a motion of some type?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
In Planning Case 24-9, I move that we recommend approval with the three listed statements in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Heikola. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So if I have it correct, the only no vote is Commissioner Noblock. All right, motion carries. Commissioner Noblock opposed. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and will be introduced by the City Council at their June 4th meeting. Thank you.
Encourage them to come to the council meeting.
No, they can't speak at the council meeting. They're only a public hearing.
Well, they can still come.
All right, moving on to other business. Mr. Pastner.
I want to talk quickly about what's going to be, what's planned currently for the June agenda. So I'm going to skip to it first because it's what we were just talking about. So there will be another public hearing scheduled for the June 20th Planning Commission meeting for the site plan and preliminary plat for the September Sun Town Home Proposal, which we have discussed. So that will be the next opportunity for public comment on the site plan itself, going back to some of the other items that are proposed to go for the Planning Commission on the June 20th meeting. A rezoning to Low Density Residential 2 and preliminary plat for single-family residential homes, 11 single-family residential homes along East River Road, just northeast of Adams Elementary, is being proposed by Harstad Homes. And their site plan just shows a cul-de-sac off of East River Road with 11 single-family units. A site plan and conditional use permit application has been submitted for an industrial use on Holly Street, south of 93rd Avenue. And this would be a speculative industrial building. And this was an item that was proposed to staff in the Planning Commission, I believe in 2021, and then withdrawn. And so it's being brought back. And this would be an industrial site plan and CUP proposal. And then finally, a preliminary plat and potentially site plan, and I should have changed that on the slide, they did submit a site plan application, but at the time I made this slide, they had not done so yet. A preliminary plat and site plan application for Hidden Creek Woods, second edition. This- is a lot that's currently zoned medium-density residential along Zeon or Exion Street. I apologize if some people might pronounce it Exion Street. At Zeon Street and Northdale Boulevard, and this would be a 22-unit townhome development that's being proposed, and staff are still working with the applicant to revise the site plan a little bit to be within the medium-density residential standards. There are some elements of the initial proposal that do not meet the standards, so there will probably be a revised version in front of you at the June 20th meeting. All four of those items will be public hearings. And that's all I have for proposals for the June 20th meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Mr. Passner, so can you remind us again when the dates for the city council committing an MDR?
The June, I'm going to pull out my phone and look at my calendar so I get it right. The first June meeting will be the introduction of the ordinance to rezone the site on University to MDR, and that is the June 4 city council meeting, and then the council will make a decision at the June 18 meeting.
Okay, and the June 18 meeting is before our meeting?
Yeah, it's before.
Correct.
Okay, so for the site plans, the two more MDR site plans that we'd be looking at, will have a committed one way or the other on the zoning by the time we get to that meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Probably.
Yeah, you never know.
Unless they decide, yeah. Well. Likely.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything on other business?
We have a new senior planner on staff, it's Kurt Behringer. He's just going to go up to the podium and introduce himself real quick.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Kurt Behringer. This is my, I believe, my fourth week here at the city. I've been in the kind of planning and engineering field for the last eight years. Got my master's degree in community and regional planning from Iowa State University in Ames, Iowa, and I'm very thrilled to kind of start my career in the public sector here at Coon Rapids, so happy to be here.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. And after tonight, you sure that was good move?
We'll see.
All right, Commissioner, anyone else have anything for other business?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Casey, motion by Casey, second, I think, Geisler got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.